The City of Dexter on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. To order at seven o'clock. And Aaron, I know you just walked in. Would you be willing to lead us in the pledge lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, united in this small but with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Aaron. Deletion everyone.
Hey, Sean.
Happy March. Question says, don't make me get up again. Isn't that good? Glad you're here. Glad you're here. Okay, Pam, welcome back.
Thank you. Arum, yes, Cousins.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle?
Present.
Kyo?
Here.
Gilbert?
I'm present remotely. I'm not sure if we're going to be willing to count that by "I'm here." I was feeling a little bit under the weather today, so that's why I'm not physically present.
Aaron?
Here.
Feel better soon.
Okay, thank you. Item C is approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve. The council work session from February twenty-sixth, our goal setting session. Council work session from February twenty-eighth, then a regular city council meeting held on February twenty-eighth.
I'll move through the minutes.
Question, thank you. Thank you. Any comments on the minutes?
Yeah, I have a number of grammatical edits, so you could just bear with me. I'll try to get through them.
Fair enough.
So on page one, just in the call to order, the city council work session meeting was called order at nine AM by Mayor Kyo held at city hall. Held at city hall. I think in other spots we say "and" was held at. So just between Mayor Kyo and held, I think we need to add "and" was.
I'm sorry, which group of minutes?
The first one, page one, just page one, thanks. And then a little bit later, under E non-range participation, there's no address for Joe Semifaro. I don't believe that he gave one when he spoke. I don't know if that's something that needs to be added to his minutes or not.
Yeah, we'll have to look that up.
Then also in his description of his comment, the last sentence, he also thinks that it's challenging to access the Zoom like information. I think like should be linked. On page three, this is beginning of the work session on the twenty-eighth. Says it was called order at six oh two AM, although I'm usually awake at that time of the meeting. Yeah, and then also add the "and" was after Kyo, "and" was held at city hall. And at the bottom of that page three, last bullet, Zach refers November, but is okay with August. It should be is. Top of page four, fourth bullet down, Jamie, what could we do with eighty-one forty Main Street? If it were no fire station, no should be not. And second bullet stairs and landing are an issues, so that's plural, but it should be singular. On page six, under J, the first bullet, under Dan's report, Dan Hoy is misspelled. It says Danny Hoy. And what's that?
Maybe we should rename it for St. Patrick's Day. Just that day.
Oh, Danny Hoy.
On page seven, first bullet. Second sentence, Mayor Kyo responded that, I think it should say that it is to make principal payments, so after it should be is. Right now it reads Mayor Kyo responded that it to make principal payments, so it would be needed is. Third bullet, staff reached out, Sciop Township should be, staff reached out to Sciop Township.
And just on the bullet?
Yep.
Relative to the DDA, two for four. I think I responded to this to make a future principal payment. On the DDA's bond. What's called. Just trying to say, that's good. Okay.
Change it. Page eight, one, two. Fourth bullet. This, I wasn't sure. I think you were talking about thirty-five fifteen. It wasn't clear to me when I read the bullet, maybe it will be clear to somebody else, so maybe somehow mentioned that it was regarding the thirty-five fifteen.
Improvements, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Page nine, first bullet, it's like one, two, three, four, five, six lines down. There's just a space where it says RFP. And were, there's missing a space there in one of the lines. And in the third bullet, second to last sentence, and the process for getting started will begin soon. It should be begin soon. And. That's it. It feels painful to me. It's probably painful to you here. I feel like it's important when the written word is how we communicate to the public that if we can, we make corrections, and it would be hard for me to see a place that needs a correction and not mention it, so.
No problem.
Thank you.
One, you said it.
Yep.
Any comments?
Oh, for me?
On the meds, yeah.
No, I mean, I could say something, but I don't need it. Some of those are, I recall, typos, not grammatic problems, but that's all I have to say. But it's the same, I agree, it should be correct.
Okay. Anybody else on council? Pam, please call the vote to approve all three sets of minutes with those corrections.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Arum?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you. The minutes are approved. We have no rear range participation, so we're down to item E, which is approval of the agenda. There is a something on the status today as well. Which recommends, I noticed, that item B postponed or removed from the agenda. Do you want to say, do you ask to remove it now or postpone it later?
I think Michelle will be okay with that.
With now?
Does someone can approve the agenda without, because it's a site of pen five?
Yep, gotcha. And we'll approve the agenda with the omission of item M five. Or postpone when I guess, tell, of the item.
No, just let it.
Okay. Okay. Five seconds.
Fisher's second, so we'll revise that. Thank you. Discussion.
I have one question. On M four, it's right now listed in the agenda as discussion of both tasks, number one and number two. In the packet memo indicates it's a consideration item. Seems to me we'd be ready to vote on it, but I didn't know what was intended, if it was meant to be discussion or consideration.
It was supposed to be just discussion.
Just discussion, so, okay. And that's fine.
Okay. Question? Any other questions on the agendas? Pam, if you would just call the vote to approve the agenda with the deletion of M five.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Arum?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item S is the declaration of any conflicts of interest. Do you have any decision? Okay, great. Said none, we will move on. Page two of the agenda, we have no further hearings. We're down to item H, which is matter range participation. Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? Start there. Okay, how about in the audience? Anyone in the audience like to speak this evening with a matter range? Okay. Records, but there's no audience participation this time. Our meeting list is in the packet of your communications on page thirteen. Have any comments on the medium calendar?
Just a note going forward, the date of the chamber meeting says, has changed. And they're going to be at the Dexter Ball Center. So. It doesn't impact this eating calendar, but it'll impact the next meeting calendar.
When are they helping, you know?
It's gonna be on three thirty.
On three?
So I think they moved it to Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Other counts? Let's slow me down if I'm going too fast. We're down to reports this evening. Our first report is from Tim Stewart. I have to start putting his name on the agenda.
You're fine.
And or.
And or. Couple updates real quick, because you guys asked. You guys asked left light pole. So Kurt had checked into it, and I guess they put it in the work order as an above ground agenda for them. Edison, of course, it was underground, so now it has to go back into that again. So tonight, the Simon doesn't have any time for it as far as what we've done, so, but we'll check into it, we just make sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, no problem. And then they've used three hundred tons salt. And we're in the agenda, he's gonna order another hundred ton this week, which will put us at a quota.
Okay.
Great, so we're on the go, so a hundred twenty percent of that will put us at a quota, it will be meet for the year.
Four hundred.
Yep.
Great, thanks for the follow-up on that.
And then it's running, obviously, it's a two-week report, three departments. If there's any questions.
I have two quick questions. The radar sign, the speed radar?
Yes.
Do we get a different one? Because the one on broad looks different to me. Like, it didn't seem like it had the whole day scanned, or maybe I just never. Has it always been the same one?
It's the same one, yeah.
That's the same.
Okay, it looked different to me.
Sometimes, if somebody gets it, there's a chance they have to replace the same one.
Okay, okay.
There's a smell around it.
Yeah, I might have.
Yeah, I did envision it being on like some orange metal like stand, and then the last time it looked, it looked much steeper. You mentioned, it says in here claiming the traffic cameras that made in Baker and made in Broad. I guess I wasn't aware of a traffic camera, so I'm curious what they knew there and what we.
So it monitors the traffic, obviously, what's going, so it, certain situations of the day, like for instance downtown, I found this on Hardway. Downtown, if you don't pull all the way up, the light will not change. So what it does is it just monitors the traffic to keep everything flowing. So if you don't pull up, this way we keep going back and forth, and then versus trying to make a left turn there. You know, we found that out when biotech was here. They were trying to make that sweeping turn to go make a right, so we stayed back a little bit while we stayed back a little bit for about six minutes before somebody went all the way around us, and then actually tripped the light.
So sometimes it gets a film over the lens, which makes it hard for it to do what it wants.
So if it detects that there is somebody there, it will trigger the lights changing?
Yeah, it's not, it's not instantaneously, but you know, like I said, what it does is once you pull up there, then it's basically saying, okay, now let's go through its cycle.
Okay, so, okay, always that's what's determining when the light changes, those cameras?
Yep.
Always? Okay.
Well, pedestrian crossing.
Well, yes, that's true, yeah.
So there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thank you.
They were added like around two thousand eight or
It was before meeting on.
Somewhere in that timeframe, you know, and as part of a congestion mitigation grant.
I don't believe.
Something didn't sit there too long to recognize that the vehicle was there.
I guess I, yeah, I don't have. Right, and that's typically how it works, at a lighted intersection?
Every, the ones where I'm in my area, they work, and I live off by South Line or something like that.
For some reason, I was envisioning it as something like in the ground.
They do have that in the ground.
We do have a box.
Yeah, in the ground, that determine weight and stuff.
I have a plan where I used to have a really lightweight car that wouldn't trigger those.
But not all our lights up here, just the ones in downtown.
Just downtown.
Otherwise, they're timed.
Yeah.
Just trip down. I think the box at at that intersection is one of the ones that can handle that level of complexity.
Okay.
Definitely, well, true.
Cool, thank you. Oh, and also, it seemed like it was wanting to be noted on page sixteen, that all the city meters were red. That was in all caps.
Yeah, I put that in there, so, because
I acknowledge the effort that must be.
Well, no, because it's, you're going from, you know, we might get an average of ten, fifteen reads in a two-week period to twenty-five hundred. So it's just, that's why I always like, it's not just a couple, ten, fifteen minute thing, it's two to three days.
Well, maybe that's something to that. We spent a lot of city tax paid money on making sure there's actually meters to work on properly. So obviously, we're getting all of the water meters to work, and that costs money to do that. And we chose to do a meter reading where we drive from, those stations, a guy, he put a crack in it, he was doing that. I mean, it would take a week, week and a half to complete meters. And these guys should probably have the fact that they were in a half day, you know, they're being ordered in, so that leaves more time to get other stuff done.
Yeah, even back when I started, and that's about a half years ago when we first started, it would take about a week, almost. A little different system, but here for myself, and then people after me, have done our due diligence to try to change everything we need to do. So like, for instance, cottonwood, I was used to literally physically have to get out and then walk around every single one, and then touch read every single one, all downtown is that way. And we have very few that would do that. Downtown, there's three cottonwoods, I'll take care of a couple of industrial work, that's about it.
So this may be a hot rail there, but I could see time when there's even more demand on staff. Might there be a point where it's, it would be advantage for us to go to a quarterly reading instead of every two months?
Um, me personally, I don't think so. From when I started to what we have now, I think it's manageable. I mean, we always, I, I think we need more staff as far as, you know, one more person in our department, DPW and stuff, but I think with what we've done, like I said, literally going for five days downtown, in the summertime, I cannot get out just to read, not the manual reads. I can do the whole city probably by first time. And that's, like I said, going from five days, four to five days, and then what they review before I enter. So I think it's manageable right now. I mean, there's a lot of different avenues they could take. They talk about putting remotes on the water tower, you know, pushing a button. I'm not a big fan of that, because I, I tend to like to go out, talk to everybody, and see how the systems do work. You know, and then I know what's failing, what's not, what's gonna take care of, stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
The other challenge with the point quarterly is we do get calls from others with high means.
Yes.
Good point. And we're able to catch it quicker by
Two, two months of a leak each one is not as painful as three.
Yeah.
So what is the word? Under DPW, what did DIUBLDS? I've not seen that word before.
Diably?
Yeah.
There you go, talking about words, it says what the diablos to price out equipment to replace.
Yeah.
The cobot, it's, it's a kind of like, what's that one? Bolivian muscle?
Yeah. That was it.
Yeah, so.
That's one of the vendors we get parts from when we get
Are they, it's around here?
Yeah, it's on Park.
Oh, it's on Park?
Yeah, it's on Park. So we went and got some parts, and then looked at stores.
Down ahead, same question. What's that down ahead, same question?
Just drive around.
Any other questions for Tim or Dan?
This isn't a question, and I mean, I obviously appreciate all the work you guys do for us, and there's a lot of stuff that you do that many people don't notice, but I just wanted to call out Cold the Ice Break. I think a lot of people enjoyed that this year, so thanks for all the work you put into that. I think it's been
It was a natural team effort this year. We had water, race water, running that thing.
Yeah.
Whoever had time.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Let people know.
And we're fortunate that they have the weather, and we have enough to keep them enjoying.
Yeah, I like it downtown, too.
Yeah.
It is, that's the right spot for it. Yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions for Tim? Okay, we will be on the community development manager report.
So Michelle is still in there, is still in New York today. Her plane got delayed, and so she's probably sitting on a plane right now. But I can try to answer any questions that might have.
Probably not a question, you could answer on the spot, although we're being pressured to do that. But just for future, I mean, I could follow up with an email. I know parking came up in the conversation about Milk Creek Brewery, and so I would just be curious to learn more about our outdoor service areas, because I know people are able, businesses are able to use some public parking as part of that. So I guess I'd be curious to know, is there a max for business on those public parking spaces that they're able to use, or is there a max total of our public parking spaces that can be used overall around that area as part of the outdoor service area, so?
I believe the recent ordinance change allows for businesses to occupy spaces directly in front of their business. So like, for example, Dubrada would have three or four spaces that are directly in front of the business, Pub had, I think, three. Off, off, it's really looking at me. And then there's a logic for eradicated, but basically, even if it's in the middle of a row of spots, the business still needs the few that are directly in front of their business.
But nothing about our ordinance says if X number of spaces are being used, then no other business can use the ones in front of them. Like, every business would have the opportunity to use the ones in front of them. So all those spaces could be taken if every business requested it?
Potentially. And for the specific uses that are allowed.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on Michelle's report? I did attend the planning commission meeting. The applicants did present the Milk Creek Brewery plan. I did, I did attend the planning commission meeting a week ago, and the applicants for the Milk Creek Brewery did present their plan. They did not have a forum. They had a forum, but Tom Phillips is a, works for Hobbs and Lapp, and that's on their team as an architect, so when that item came up, he went to the audience, so they were down one. So there was no action taken, so they'll have to do the bump here again in April today, we can be. But I think the question, just so the council's aware, the question of parking waiver, how we would do it if we did it, is gonna come before us. Planning commission, the members that were there, they were able to say something. Four out of the, in the group of four. I think everybody indicated that they understood the request. That they might be willing to consider a partial waiver. But, you know, trust that we would take up a consistent method like we did with the Radicals, or last vendor that came for us in that way, if we were going to do a waiver. Advocate made a comparison, I didn't actually read the whole packet, there was quite a bit of information there, but they made a comparison that if the if the calculation based upon use has them, in our ordinance would have them provide eighty-seven spaces. And the plan that they have based upon the layout, such as like forty-four, I might be off on it, so. So that essentially, they're providing fifty-one percent of what they were required to do. When erratic gales presented theirs, they requested a reduction of a certain percent, it's like a third or twenty percent, I can't remember what it was. But our parking count and study that was prepared by Carla Orpen indicates that actually, you know, shared parking reduces the burden on applicants by between twenty and forty percent, is what it actually says in there. So if you just put the difference as a third, they're gonna, they're gonna come in requesting somewhere around eighteen to twenty be waived. At some level, so I'm just trying to get out in front of the such all set of points as you can about it, so.
It would help if in the packet when that comes, or however it comes, if you could have that erratic gales, like for comparison information, that's part of that, would help me at least.
There were it's a good idea. There were handful of people between those that attended online and a couple that listened in the audience that asked some questions. One of the questions that was asked was related to the bike rental portion of it. I don't remember the lady's name, but she was concerned about the bicycle use on the trail, the trails essentially, likes to walk and anyway, you know, asked whether the pathways were for bicycles or just walkers. And we clarified that they're, you know, non-motorized users, no motorized vehicles, the bicycles are supposed to be on there, or can be on there just like pedestrians and runners and such. You know, was suggested that maybe the bike rental place could help reinforce the courtesy rules of, you know, when there's others around, slow down, that type of thing, you know. Anyway, I'm only mentioning this because I was there, I thought it, I wouldn't talk too about it, but anyway, I'm guessing that we're gonna see some request for a waiver, approval of a waiver of some type. And then, I think, if I remember correctly, we lowered the cost per space from the nine grand that's in the ordinance to twenty-five hundred per space. So I'm trying to get off the question a little bit.
Question, yeah, I guess, I mean, I agree, Jamie, I'd like to see that comparison, and I just wonder, are there any other comparisons that we've got in addition to erratic gales? Because one-to-one is not, you know, I just feel like to maybe put together.
Well, if you, this isn't a waiver per se, but if you, if you looked at what we did for one fifty Jeffords, now they're in the central business district, CBD, instead of just outside where Radicals is in the village commercial, and Milk Creek Brewery is a village commercial, but they're in the central business district, so they technically don't have to provide you know, parking and such in that area, but they provided basically one space per use for those condominiums, or twenty-two or twenty-four alone, I think they provided twenty-four spaces. Our ordinance would apply at a factor of one and a half or two two, I think, per residential unit normally, if you were trying to provide parking for that. So I mean, if you consider they had a waiver of twenty spaces, and then they, or twenty-two or twenty-four, wherever that number is. And then they donated eighty thousand to the parking home. Eighty thousand divided by twenty-five hundred, this is twenty-four. And it, we also accepted about the same amount for that business. It's not exactly the same, because there was no waiver requested, but if you do the math.
No, that, that helps, that's what I wanna see.
Imagine if it comes out of that old number, that old number, that number of twenty-five hundred. So whether there's consistency there or not, I'd find consistency, yeah, but.
Yeah, for sure. I just wanna make sure we're being as fair as possible.
Yeah, and then the other ones were back prior to us changing the number from lower number to higher number.
Just probably Don Burnell building, we probably had to pay the ultimate.
Yeah, he, maybe. You know, I didn't need to jump the, the her report, but I did, I didn't stay for the entire, I don't think it should be, because all the ordinance stuff was after that, I did not stay for that, so.
Maybe a comment for Justin, the video doesn't look like it's up yet. I'd be happy to watch the video for the planning commission meeting, whenever that gets up.
Sure. Okay, people? There's sheriff's court on there, right?
Yeah.
And we have a comment on the federally sheriff report.
I did reach out to our lieutenant and ask him if he's able to attend our April meetings.
So no comments, we'll break down to your report, Justin.
Sure, so as everybody knows, I got surgery last Monday. Still in the recovery process, you know, overall, pain is fairly low. But, you know probably be starting physical therapy and all that fun stuff. So I'll likely be, you know, in and out on certain days the next few weeks. I'm gonna try and be in it as much as I can. We did have some new hires start in the last couple of weeks. We had our new recreation coordinator start today. We had our associate planner start per time last Monday. So they're, they're off and running. We're absolutely excited about that.
Couldn't you mention their names?
So our associate planner is Reese Whitney. And our recreation coordinator is Mary Ann White.
Mary Ann?
Mary Ann, yeah, and she is a city resident. We are also in the process of interviews for our open administrative assistant position. We have those interviews today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, for the first round, and then likely sometime next week, the second round, so. Trying to, trying to get that. Trying to, trying to get that hire in place as soon as we as we can as well. We, uh, did get a letter from Waste Management, which was included in the packet as an attachment to my report. We have a meeting set up with, with them in April. You know, my, my goal was just is to hear them out, not necessarily agree to what they want. But, um, I, I imagine that they're, they're going, going to say something similar to what is included in the letter that, you know, they've experienced unusually high costs. Um, and they're looking for a per-resident increase toward contract, even though our contract is good through, I believe it's twenty-twenty-four. Um, with four percent increases each year, which I, I, I already thought was a pretty, pretty large increase year over year. But, you know, we'll, we'll meet with them, hear them out, and, um, see what comes out of that meeting. Um, if, if there is any, any thought to potentially increasing, um, the, the per-resident cost, then we'd have to go back to Tom Orpen as, as recommendation.
Zach? So out of curiosity, after I saw that, I went and checked, and on November, or on, on March first, seven days after the invasion, they voted, uh, the, the Board of Waste Management voted to increase their per-share dividend from fifty-four cents to sixty-five cents. So they are, which is the highest I've seen when I was looking back on board reports. So they're not, in my mind, hurting for money if they're paying their, their shareholders more money. So I would not be comfortable with giving more unless that comes down. Just my couple panels.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Other questions on, for Justin or on that eleven?
So if you go, yeah, the Waste Management website, I see they have a press release dated December ninth to that effect. It's not a huge difference in the timing, but it says it went from point five seven five to point six five, but that's right on their own website. So these were something you could point to. They're propagating it. Uh, as part of your report, you've been including the, uh, future scheduled topics, potential topics. Would that really appreciate it? I don't know if there's a way, maybe there's too much uncertainty. If we could populate or put a few more placeholders, even if it's just TBD roughly in place for the remaining fire station discussions, or even, um, if not the discussions, at least of the ballot postal deadline dates are, it would be helpful to keep those fresh.
Um, and that was, um, one thing that, uh, I think we, we wanted to talk about was, uh, what dates, what, what, what potential dates were for the next, um, fire station, uh, work session? It, it sounded like the last meeting councils addressed and had a, had a, uh, the next one being a, a longer work session with the chief, um, walking through, um, fire station design concepts. And, uh, you know, if, if that's, you know, more than an hour or two, um, it might be best on either an off night or a Saturday. And so I wanted to get council's feel for what, what your availability or preferences for, for dates.
Can you please refresh my memory as to why it takes five to ten hours? That's what he said, it could take five to ten hours.
I think that was his joke in the, the, full detail.
It's meant to be three.
Okay.
Answer, I'm a three, yeah.
But, you know, I think, I think if we can do, I don't know, could everybody else still have the date out? Did everybody do March twenty-sixth?
What day did we get?
It's a Saturday. It was two, two days before our next council meeting.
I don't know that it could, but I don't want you to do stuff because of.
I, I can also send an email out with that date and just, and just have it confirmed.
Good, then I'll look at, I'll look at it.
Thanks, Justin. Zach?
Have, you been able to find out whether or not our contract with Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department requires us to provide a substation for them here?
I, I, I have not had a chance to look into that yet. That, that is on my list, though.
Did everybody see the little letter to the editor about the police station?
I missed it, yeah.
Just short, uh, hoist out a little bit.
Yeah, it's in the paper?
Yeah, did you read it?
Yeah.
It just said, I'm writing this letter to satisfy a requirement for my communications merit badge. I thought there on the location was extra police stations, because it's right next to Mill Creek Park. It creates a sense of security in Mill Creek Park. Allows residents, especially tourists to, to, to park, but also feel like safe. Some areas I've read these public parks can see quite a lot of stations left. It's really show at night. Park is the complete opposite. It's got a police station right next to it. Thanks for your time. I got it. Two, four, four, eight.
I love it when kids participate.
Something tells me Zach that it's not a requirement, Fire Department.
Dexter Township does and Webster Township does it.
All right, they get the advantage, the fact that we got it.
I think you're right.
Any other questions for Justin? I would say, Josh, you've done a good job during the week when, uh, Justin was away, so thank you for that.
No problem.
Moved down to my report. Had a good lunch meeting with the mayor from Celine. Chatted back and forth about a lot of different things. Uh, he, um, he's very interested in our, that park that we created and potentially doing something similar in a location in Celine, so don't be surprised if he reaches out for a, uh, a daily phone visit, other than representing a similar town or something a year ago. I already touched on the planning commission meeting from March seventh. And, uh, I had a phone call with, uh, Allison afterwards. She called me the next day to kinda discuss various comments and heard about the that, that bicycle and parking, all sorts of stuff, so. Wanted to work to know, like, to explain to her my thought process, some of what we was talking about. But we need to, we're gonna need to work through that. One of the things I said to the planning commission um, after the residents school, because they all, they all talk about, you know, council have to consider that, council have to do this. You know, we, we go last in the process. I mean, we observe and pay attention to what's coming down the pipe, but we, we don't jump, jump to the question. We go last in the process. So I, I told her, you know, she's just gotta, she and her team just have to stay true to what they believe is their request and allow that to play out as well. And if there's, you know, support for waivers, there will be support for waivers, but. Hey, let's, you know, it's very public, why, why do you push it this way? Uh, I hope everybody still has the dates for the city manager review and the, um, budget review on your calendar. We did not pick a formal date for that second budget review workshop. Start zeroing in on that in April, if you will, but, uh, there's data, data there that works better or doesn't work better, you have to work on it so we can get that firm done. At the time I looked at the report, I thought I might miss a portion of the BA meeting, but that is cleared up, so I will be attending that meeting at full. Any other questions for me? That's that.
It's, it's not popular Robert's order, but in the past, we've taken the practice of asking questions about, um, stuff in the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, please.
So a couple of things that caught my eye, uh, especially Dexter Day, it's part of the request for the closure, was that we assist them in managing traffic for the parade on Saturday. Is that something that we do or just something that they put in the request? Because it's not an easy thing to do, and I'd rather not have our folks have to donate a Saturday.
So, um, we, we, we do, uh, put out barriers, uh, for, for their use, uh, for, for Friday and Saturday. And then, uh, we, they, they, they contract with the Washtenaw County Sheriff, to help with, you know, all the other stuff.
Okay, so we, we don't have to send someone out in the water van on Saturday to block traffic for them?
Um, I think, uh, we may have someone go on Saturday night or Sunday to, to hold it over the road. Would you wear a mask? It doesn't cost money, so if something happens, we'll call it.
Thank you. And, um, just one last thing to be mindful of. Tomorrow is the ten-year anniversary of tornado. Through the year twenty twelve, so. We had similar warm weather, as I recall, shortly after that. Anyway, lots to remember, who are on? And you just go, hardly was ten years ago.
It is.
It was by best, it was by best.
We were actually talking about that in, in one of our entries today, but, um, that was the week that we were, uh, implementing BSNAs for the first time. And, uh, we actually got the BSA trainer, uh, in the office, um, while things were going on following, you know? But because BSA was several months out in their scheduling, it was tough for, for staff to say, oh, yeah, no, just come back in a couple of months. So that was, that was interesting.
I was a, uh, a diet party for a person on the, entered the watershed council and, uh, she, uh, uh, you know, just, just coffee and stuff like that. One of the guys said, tell me whether tornado weren't on Dexter. And I said, no, no worries. And so I rushed right away. And by the time I got out to fourteen, uh, it, the hail was that big and and so I just followed along behind a semi. So I got to, to, uh, Zee Road there, pulled off, because I had a, a meeting with the, uh, potassium, okay, there, pulled in there, and, uh, this guy comes in at eight-thirty. So we've been waiting the whole time before the singer. And I, he says, yeah, he says, I, uh, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to just get through this as fast as I can. I said, why is that? He says, because my wife's having a baby now. I said, what, what were you doing here if your wife's having a baby? So he rushed right away, came back a couple of days later, but yeah, just couldn't believe it. That was an important thing for him, right then. They should have got his back, his weight. Um, didn't worry about the kid at all. Then I was was in, and then when I got into town, they wouldn't let me in because I didn't have an ID that said I belong in the city of Dexter, okay? Didn't let me into the.
Yeah, I had to wait out for the high school for hours. The state police, I had it all locked up.
Yeah.
Uh, I went down when I heard, and I went to the fire hall to ask if anybody needed anything, and they couldn't communicate. So they sent me with a message from Mary Marshall up to the school because she was gonna be the emergency site. So I felt very useful, uh, but only for that one task.
Hard to understand.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
And you had other communities here.
Yeah, Chelsea helped out a good time.
I mean, the residents were literally walking behind, come through us, one times, I mean, obviously, the state employees were right there at thirty or forty, they stopped us, we got received over industrial park, Waste Management was staging now. As we were going through the heavy explosion with Chelsea, loading as much stuff as we could load.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty crazy. I was sitting out at the animal, one territorial, then Dexter, big girl, and my dog.
Oh, jeez.
Tornado went through us, and then I lived outside of town at that time. I had no idea. I got home when my neighbors came over. So tornado was pretty, it was excellent.
Well, it got cleaned up pretty quickly. And, and I remember that part of us were amazed at how quickly. And neighbor to neighbor and chainsaws and, oh, it was great.
Yeah, it was very lucky because all of our electrical was underground. If it wasn't underground, it'd take you two months like that.
Yeah, I remember you saying something, yeah, about that.
Anyway, just wanted to mention that, that all the time and all the springtime, so.
Yeah.
It was a Thursday. Okay, are there any council member reports before we do the term agenda? Seeing none, we're down to item K?
I know we approved the six items on the consent agenda. Dills and payroll on the amount of two-hundred-eighty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents. The art selection, uh, committee appointments, the road closure for Dexter Day, the closure of Central Street for the Giza plant sale, road closure for the Memorial Day Parade, and road closure for the Ana Ropito Bike Club event in the Dexter Business and Research Park.
Thank you. Motion by Fisher, support, second by Cousins, thank the votes. And if you'd call the vote to approve the six items in the potential documents, please?
Griffin, yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Ara?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Pio?
Yes. Motion carries. We're down to item L, unfinished business, consideration of the community survey. Stuff in the package, there's also, I believe, updated information in the, in the supplement. I'm curious, before we, did anybody try taking the survey?
I put through the screen.
I tried taking and got kicked out on question twenty-seven. I don't know if it was near. I didn't go back and do it again, but it's, and I tried to fill in all the stuff, like, like load up those words just to see. And, and anyway, if I'm the only one, I'm not gonna be here.
Thank you, square one.
Uh, you said, you said that was question twenty-seven?
I think that's about where I was.
I just looked at the art selection thing, and that is something that I was on, and I don't see my name there.
Uh, maybe because you're, you're appointed through, or, uh, uh, or residents.
Got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so has everybody had a chance to see the supplement? The organized spirit towards that is if, if he has some suggested rephrasing word choices?
I think the one that is most substantive is, um, I think Q five, uh, where we're asking how long they've been a resident at the state. I think we need to have an option that says, I am not a resident, I'm not a city Dexter resident, just so people can indicate that, because we know this possibly going to a broader area, and it's, I don't think there was a skip, unless if there's a skip pattern, then it's fine.
I believe there should be a skip log.
Okay, so then it's not relevant, okay. Uh, other comments are generally of the form like capitalizing zip, zip, rephrasing, if we say, you know, please state your annual household, household income. I think it's just generally best practice to a- actually ask the question, what is your annual household income? We have some questions that say, do you believe X? I prefer to say, do you think? I think beliefs are of one form and thoughts are of another form. Some things were like dropping hyphens. I don't know. Q thirty-seven also is a little bit more substantive replacing. So we have a middle option, uh, not applicable on a satisfied, dissatisfied scale. I would rather see neither satisfied, neither satisfied nor dissatisfied as that misplace.
Which one was that?
Q thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven or this?
For Q thirty-seven, I actually changed it to indifferent, is it different?
Yeah, I guess I've never seen a scale that has that. I don't feel strongly really about these, but be fine if you made the changes, but if you don't want to make the changes, that's fine. Like I said, a neutral, maybe neutral. I have seen that at many.
Maybe a shrugging emoji.
I have seen a survey where they just use emojis or like smiling, yeah. Yeah, maybe it doesn't fit, maybe it's too many words, so.
To me, there is a difference between indifferent or neutral than not applicable. Because not applicable, it would be somebody that would say that, right. It doesn't apply to that right person.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think it's too not applicable. That's, that would be on the right side of the scale, as opposed to the middle.
So, neutral maybe. I'm fine with indifferent.
And then I also mentioned that the postcard, which I don't think, it wasn't, we have the copy of the postcard back in the package here or not, but I don't think the original version I saw had an option. If somebody wanted to request a hard copy of the survey, said they could know that they I don't think the original version I saw had an option, if somebody wanted to request a hard copy of the survey, said they could know that they could do that by calling the office. So just somehow it's getting done.
I'm okay with this. And whether we do satisfy this as control or I'm all over this here, okay. So you're actually, you see we do satisfy, but that will count.
So are you entertaining a motion for action of the survey with these changes?
That would be welcome for me if. I still move.
My second.
Michelle, second by. Do you have any other thoughts? If this is well done, that's all, we'll hit this out for how long, four weeks?
The, the goal's four weeks, so we'll, we'll track, track, get this out as soon as we can.
Okay, good job, everybody. Okay, call the vote. Just call the vote to approve the resurvey with the changes on the back of the pages.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Ara?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for your, good reading of that. We're down to new business. For the business items now, number one is consideration of the three year contract with BioTech for sledge hauling. I have a spare contract.
Move the three year contract with BioSledge or BioTech for sledge hauling. And the amount of, as soon as I get to the page.
What doesn't have a number in here, does it?
1819.
Yeah, there's, there's pricing on. 13, I think.
Yeah, they kind of start on.
Okay, I'm not gonna read all those prices, but with the prices is noted on page 113.
Oh, second.
Michelle, second by Griffin, thank you. Hey, do you gentlemen want to say on that? You don't have to, just have a vote.
We've been doing business with BioTech for 24 years, which there's a lot that goes, a lot more than goes with sludge handling than what we think. We like the service that they provide, they're safe, they're clean. We haven't had any, any major disasters with them, which we had with other sludge haulers. We think it's a fair price. I mean, Tim spent a lot of time calling around and myself to other communities, looking at what they're paying and going forward. We don't have to have a lot of overtime with these guys because they're usually working past 3:30, 3:30. We have a supervisor there and we let them shut the gate up when they leave. As they do what they're supposed to do with the field as far as landing plan. We gotta go out once a day to make sure that they're sure that they're doing what they should be doing. Company, there's a few more out there, but we didn't get any good feedback from any of the other communities. So we would really like to stick with BioTech. And usually we do a five year contract with them, but we're thinking three was everything that's going on now might be a better way. But we appreciate your support on that. You're a good company and I've shared this for a long time, good job.
Thank you. Is the price a much different than the current? Has it just gone up a little bit?
Yeah, this went up from, what was it, 3.9? But when we, when we did the original.
That's what the, that's what the blue number is on the video.
Okay. Okay. So when we originally did the five year contract with them, they had Synagro was still in business. And then, right, so they were competing and Synagro and BioTech were the ones that were doing the most of our business for 25 years. Synagro was. I don't know if you remember, Synagro got in trouble with Detroit. They had a bunch of underhanded stuff going on. So we just got a really nice five year contract, was a lot cheaper than any of the other communities. And then they got in trouble and then BioTech was the only, the only, the show for hauling sludge. And like I said, there's a few other ones, but the other few of these are going to look towards BioTech. So we're thinking we're getting a fair price. Things have changed in the last five years.
We also talked to the original one that they sent us, the contract that sent us. But the obviously diesel fuel is the biggest provider, so to speak here. And so if you look back, there's provisions for these people. They originally wanted to start at the 350. And then moving back to it said, we need to make this so it would look good with everybody on both sides. So they did, I think they did good work.
So it was a super job in four diesel, as trouble was up and we got that over as part of it.
So yeah, well, all right. It went from 350 to four. It doesn't start a lot, four hours versus the 350. So we could sustain a lot more. Awesome. So they, they worked with us pretty well, but everywhere like Dan said, everywhere they called around. Had nothing but good things. And when we asked about these other companies, everybody said the same thing. Even people that had these other companies said we bought back those.
And do they do the tank cleaning?
Yes, they do.
So they do do, how often, do they do that, Dan?
We were gonna try to get it done. This year, we couldn't get it done because of COVID and everything. We're hoping next year. We're hoping to do it every three to five years. We can tell how much, how many salads are in there. With the improvements that we've done down there, we're not gonna have the solid problems that we had, the grit and everything, because of that. Good, you know. So we're hoping this next budget year, we'll get that, that cleaned out and right.
I just saw the, the hourly, the take of a day or what's it, how long does it take them?
It's usually about a day, day and a half. It takes them a half day.
So in seven, three years, we have a $4,000 whatever.
Well, and we, we can tell how much is in there too. We know that it's quite a bit in there now because over the years we haven't really had the grip, the headboard, so we haven't.
It's gotten the annual cost of a bit, right, okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Michelle, second by Griffin. Any questions on that item? Yeah, please call the vote.
Hubbard, yes.
Griffin, yes. Ara, yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. And because this item P2 is consideration of the fire station opportunity statement. On 72, the fact.
I'd like to. Make a motion using the one from Michelle.
Okay. By Fisher.
Okay, so to adapt the opportunity statement. Or call it or how to identify, but.
Okay, is there support for that?
I support.
Second. Sorry, so motion by Fisher. By Sanam. Okay, discussion. We discussed this a couple of weeks ago. Do some check around. Motion, get something out there at the table.
Yeah, I'll just note, I mean, I've been talking so long time. I came up with mine at the end of our work session. I know I talked a bit about inclusion of the phrase, the service is excellent and what was it that we were trying to convey? So I did my best to come up with a statement that I felt like. Was in more detail or articulate, what I thought we were trying to convey, which is to say, this is really a credit to our, to the people working out of this station. This, you know, it's not in a great condition. To their credit, the service is still excellent. That's why I came up with my version. I don't necessarily feel strongly either way. I wanted to explain my rationale for why I put that together.
Yes. Other thoughts, questions, hands? Daniel?
I think this is a good argument for people to vote no for anything. They're gonna read the level of service is excellent. Whoa, and. So I, I, everyone knows I'm a bit blunt, but I'd like to say what the problem is. It's functionally obsolete. It's been punching above its weight and that comes at a cost, deferred maintenance and all sorts of things. So that's just my thoughts.
I ask a question.
Sure, then.
So with that in mind, I can, I can see how Jamie's statement might not be problematic for you then. I mean, would you agree with that or is that still problematic the way she's phrased it?
Well, if, if I were to be the person wordsmithing, I, I would have instead something like, while the service delivered. Or although residents have been satisfied with the service out of the station. Because that, that's what we see, we see the, the side that faces us, not that they have to keep the trucks out to clean out hoses and that stuff. I'm not gonna mistake whoever it is, but I think it's setting it up to fail for any, any ask of money.
I didn't choose one of the others because I didn't think that somehow to me, the praise to the firefighters didn't belong in this opportunity statement. It, it just didn't seem to fit me to state what the problem is, what the solution may be, and that's the end of it. So I thought that it was a little dicey to put in. As for who is the credit to the firefighters, I think that's something that should be taken care of in another, another arena.
When it's, it's. The condition of the station is not a reflection on them. They don't longer control it.
Exactly.
Sanam?
Yeah, and the reason I liked Michelle's statement is the portion about the council involvement and our intention. So I think that, that was important to call out.
Wow.
Can I ask a question to Donna?
Yeah.
Okay, so Donna, I, I hear what you're saying, but so then. And I don't necessarily disagree that this isn't the place for praising the firefighters, but I thought that's. I thought like Jamie, that that was what we were trying to convey. So the one from Michelle then. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable either saying it's excellent. Because I think that that is praising the firefighters. And to your point, that's, this isn't the place for it, right? So I mean, could we change Michelle's to something like level of service delivered out of the station, you know? I, I don't know, and here we are back hung up on this, right?
Well, when I read it, I saw the part about while the service delivered is excellent, that that is the problem that we have. As far as.
That the service is excellent?
May I finish?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That putting that in there sort of lays out for the community, while the service is this, this is what we have. And to explain what our problem is and then to give a solution to it. So that's how that struck me. The other part of it, to the credit and so on and so forth, I just feel like that doesn't fit in a. In a political, that, this is a political statement. I just didn't think it all in there.
And does it, does it feel?
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to see that done any other place, but not here. I'm done. I'm done.
Why do you want to continue asking?
I, to answer maybe, but if I'm missing to the credit somewhere in the user, is that like?
That's Jamie's, Jamie's bread and milk from Michelle part, what the third line says, and that is.
Oh, yeah, I guess I just go back to, I'm not sure. Like, I feel like that part of Jamie's is more clearly conveying what I feel like Michelle's is sort of saying under the surface. And I'm not sure I can separate the two things. If that makes any sense. I mean, I know I was saying, I, I mean, maybe I wasn't saying it, but I was thinking at the last meeting, yeah, I like this saying it's excellent. But the only reason I wanted that in there was because I wanted to make sure that the firefighters knew that they had our support because, you know, they do. But like Donna's saying, this isn't the place for that and I agree with that too. So now I'm not sure I feel comfortable with it in there at all.
Well, let me throw this out there, see how it fits. I've actually written something down, so I'm not gasping. So from the, the current motion, which is the Michelle one there. Replacing or starting off instead of the level of service delivered out of the station is excellent, however. With instead, while residents have been satisfied with the service delivered out of the current or out of the fire station. The current city of Dexter fire station is functionally obsolete and continuing.
That, when you said while, I, I think that's exactly why I was thinking, you need some, a while there to smooth, just bring that along, yeah.
So read that one more time so I can, I know you're just, you're going to Michelle, so while the level of service delivered.
While residents have been satisfied with the service delivered out of the station.
Current city of Dexter Fire.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks. So just two comments. I would be fine with completely getting rid of any reference to service delivery or satisfaction in this statement. So I just want to throw that out there. I'd be fine with, this is my version that I think Zach had originally proposed. I also think it's potentially define, you know, so I put together, what I put together is a compromise. I, I'd rather, I just assumed nothing about that you mentioned. In, in Zach's latest one, if I'm going with the compromise mode here. I prefer although to while because I reserve while for indicating the passage of time. Like while dinner was cooking, I washed the dishes. Now you know how I spend my food time. So anyways, that's my.
No, I, I pointed out the difference to date between which in that for clauses and zoning ordinance.
Okay, so although, although residents.
Yes.
Okay, great, we have although residents.
Although residents have been satisfied with the service delivered out of the station. The current city of Dexter fire station is functionally obsolete.
And then we get rid of the comma between the station and in 2022, that showed up in Michelle's.
Then the first sentence.
Yeah.
Regular direction of that proposed. Okay, so if that's the case, then. Anna, are you and Sanam willing to draw your original motion?
Yes.
So I'll have to do an amendment to the motion?
Sure.
Okay, and then can somebody, Zach wants to make the motion?
You're gonna make me read again, aren't you?
I am.
All right.
You're, you're. I put stuff back.
All right, so I. Yep. I move adoption of the following as our fire station opportunity statement. Although residents have been satisfied with the service delivered out of the station. And this continues from the Michelle bit then, the current city of Dexter fire station is functionally obsolete to meet the demands of a modern fire and rescue station in 2022. No comma there. Therefore, the city of Dexter council has determined the current station needs significant renovation or a new fire station needs to be constructed to ensure the health, safety and welfare of our firefighters and our residents.
Okay, so it's modifying the first step for that first sentence on there. Very supportive, second for Zach's motion.
I support.
Great. Don't second by Sanam. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, damn, I'm gonna look over to you, call the votes, everybody change their eyes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Ara?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Motion carries. Very good, everyone. Two, there remain two business items or discussion items. And three is discussion of the Smith preserve agreement. Turn this over to you, does that make sense?
Yes. So. As you're aware, the county is working on construction of the border border trail from Chelsea to Dexter. A number of years ago, the city owned land outside the, the, or village owned property outside of the village boundary. Which was granted to it from the Smith family. The city then, or the village at the time then turned around and granted that, that land to Washtenaw County through their natural preservation program. We entered into a, basically a donation agreement with the county, which is included in your packet. The county has reached back out asking if the city would have any issues with the county use, or if the city would have any issues with the county using a portion of that property to run the border border trail. The county use, or if the city would have any issues with the county using a portion of that property to run the border to border trail. Just from, from a quick read of the, the donation agreement. It didn't seem like there was anything that would necessarily prevent them from the city standpoint in doing so. But they wanted to verify that the city would be comfortable with that, we wouldn't raise any objections. I think the bigger issue is likely with the county in itself and the natural preservation program. And their own stipulations on themselves.
So you're, are you looking to add a simple sentence that says, well, okay, if the trail goes through the property? I mean, essentially that.
Essentially.
I mean, it says there's no structures in the term.
Right.
I think that's the word.
It seems to me now that just in their hands, they should do the research. They should pay for the, for reviews.
And, and, and they are, and they've, they've had, and in attorney, they've got their attorney review that. But part of that attorney review was, you know, you should reach out to the city and make sure that they're comfortable with it.
I have a question on Matt.
Yes.
Are we talking about really just having the trail run on that one dotted line border?
On.
Small stretch?
On 123.
Yeah.
I think, I think they're looking at, at the solid line rather than the dotted.
So it's significantly more.
Yeah, I, I talked to Roy Townsend a little bit on this. They, they're trying to get the border to border trail through as many nice areas as possible as opposed to just being along the side of the road.
Yes.
And since, since they have the ability to get back to the preserve and get people to that land. They feel it's more of a, you know, a nice feature to ride through as well, walk through as opposed to. Like you said, like having like a set of sidewalks.
Okay, so they're asking to go solid line as opposed to. I just, I don't know. I spent a lot of time in those preserves and I really like the natural, the preparation. So. It's not in it. I'm not thrilled with it, but. I'm, I'm pretty extreme when it comes to these things, so.
Yeah, I think I'm, I feel a little bit similar to Wa. That's one we've gone to a number of times. I'm just trying to think like potential unintended consequences, if there would be any. Would that suddenly become a place? I mean, I don't really see anybody using it for, for walking necessarily, like as part of a through route for walking. I would see somebody doing that because they'd have to already be walking on kind of busy roads to get that far, right? I think. If you're already going there to walk, presumably you're doing it because you want to walk through nature. So then I, would it necessarily be asshole? Like it would be.
No, no, they, they, they want to make it.
A hard surface or something like that. So I mean. So then I just wonder, is it going to get parked up because people are going to want to go there to get on their bike to get to downtown Dexter or something? Because there's not a lot of parking down there. And then people who actually want to, who want to use it to like be stationary within the preserve, there's not going to be parking or something. I don't know. Those are a few thoughts that came to my mind.
Well, chances are whether the path goes past the preserve area or through it, that people want to park there.
I think Dexter Chelsea Road is very beautiful as it is, but I, yes.
Do you know where the parking is on this preserve? Because I do use a lot of them, just not this one.
Yeah, Dexter Chelsea Road and they somewhat recently Navy added a sign that says like preserve.
Yeah, I see. So it's right by the dotted line anyway, right?
It's just south of, you see where Parker comes in?
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's just. Towards Chelsea, along Dexter Chelsea Road from there.
So yeah, regardless of whether they use the solid line or the dotted line, that parking lot's still.
It's going to be on the trail. It's going to be right basically.
Yeah.
Cause, cause there's no, there's no long driveway into that property, right? It's just a little. Car out into the trees really. I don't think they're, I don't think they're suggesting that they expand the area either. Are they?
No, I don't think they're suggesting using the line that they have.
Changed things. I just remembered Dorothy Blanchard, our home naturalist and how she, there are certain things that she would go there to pick. Because it only grew there and the spring peepers and so on. So I think I understand what you're saying about wanting it to be preserved.
Yeah, I mean, I go to those areas to be like, I mean, to be as far away from. Things as I can. And if there's going to be the border to border trail running right through it, I'm not going to go back to that preserve. I'm going to choose one that will.
Well, they're, you'll notice they're making the effort not to have it though, right?
It's, it's, but it's not.
Yeah. So what, what is, what are you looking for from us?
Well, so, so feedback, did they take back the county to say, yes, council's interested in amending the agreement or, or no, council's not really interested in amending the agreement?
So we've got, we've got. Some mixed sentiments there. Or at least some people that are concerned about. Keeping the villa, the preserve as natural as possible. Is that fair to say?
I just think that's the purpose of that whole natural areas preservation program. That's the whole purpose of it. That's, that's it's. Why, why they, it was started.
I can flex. I just wanted to. I just wanted to, to make that opinion known, but I, I can flex with this.
I like the idea that it gets people to it. And, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm over here being really, you know, adamant, but I also. It's just the principle of the thing, but if this is what needs to happen for this, I'm. I can compromise.
Well, then we can bring the, the question that, or the, the comments that we're concerned about preserving it is this, and how are we going to do that? For example, both signs that say no bicycles except for on the trail, put a bicycle rack so folks who do want to walk in, know they have to park their bike there. Perhaps like over on the Chelsea side, they have the wire fence to keep people from watering off on properties. So there are treatments that they can do to minimize the impact. And I think that's fair for us to, to kind of push them. Keep that, but I think it's a good, good path and will make it much more interesting for the folks on the bikes for sure. You can all have feedback on. Yeah, see what comes back, see what, how that impacts, if it does.
I wonder if.
Sure.
So in that part, there are kind of like two loops. There's one off to the left, that's a little bit longer, and then one off to the right, that's a little bit shorter. So I'm trying to look from a satellite view. I can't really tell. But it's, I don't know if what they're trying to do is, because there are, yeah, like I said, there already is like a path just through the nature. So I don't know if they're trying to overlay that path exactly or not. So it would be helpful. In the one that comes back to see visuals and see if they're just trying to pave over that, you know, that part of the edges of those paths work that would be. Just like, yeah, when it's so preserved, what is there for walking through?
Thank you. Yes, Paul.
Oh, sorry. No, just you mentioned that one of the possible benefits might be that it's more people that might maybe go on with that, say. I haven't like been to many of these preserves, but I think like a hard path there might also make it accessible for people in wheelchairs and letting them enjoy the. Preserve as well from always the edge of it. Yeah, accessibility.
Yeah.
Paul, it's very good.
Good point.
I didn't hear Tom Phillips in my head. I think he's the one who has said accessibility doesn't always require a page surface. I don't know if this has come up in planning at all, or might be other surfaces that are accessible.
I think very often so can do that. Quality like, does not, does not require sticking a park every place you can.
Okay, I think we've got a good feedback from a bunch of angles to talk about them. Get back to them?
I will.
Okay, everyone. Okay, business item number four is a discussion of the road taxes, number one and number two of work. Related to. Just so it's downtown. And then how did Dan Hoyer and. Three hundred roads. Justin, do you want to switch to that one?
Sure.
So, so we, we did get the feedback back from OJ Chalmers. Hope that, it's making OJ Chalmers going to be here, right? To kind of talk about. The, the results. But, but I think the, the results are kind of. To be expected that, you know, adding in, leaving pedestrian intervals does potentially improve the. Timing availability for pedestrians at, at potential cost of. Vehicle owners. I think they did find that at H R Road and Dan Hoyer, that there was not sufficient time. To be able to cross as, as much as there should be. And so they, they did recommend that the walking clearance timing for that to, to be increased. So I wanted to bring this back for council's review. Think that is a consideration.
What is it? What is it now?
Um.
I didn't see a thing here. Look for this.
What is that now? Hold on. The interval?
Yes. What are we changing from?
Task two?
Yes.
And in six seconds. Last, it's on, it's on page, it's on page 136, above the finding recommendation. The second paragraph on the.
Six to 10, okay.
So everybody see that? Flashing don't walk would be made longer as well for 14.
Yeah, to me task two seemed like a no brainer because it seemed to me something wasn't the way it was supposed to be. And so I think it makes sense to align it with what the recommendation is. Task one, I am also in support of. I think it's fine if. Traffic has to wait a little bit at a busy time of day to allow pedestrians push the button to get across. I think. That might be the time you might need one of those the most and. I think. At least the one I'm thinking of, of main and broad, if it's intersection for pedestrian traffic. So. I am not concerned about the slight delay in tra, the vehicle or traffic flow to allow the pedestrians. I would be in favor of both of these, one of the fact.
So, better. I guess our next sentence, yeah, I'm in favor of all of them. And again, I'll, I'll say level of service for cars. Ninety percent of these cars don't live in city of Dexter. They live in Dexter Township, Futnum Township, Howell. What this math doesn't include here is the level of service for pedestrians. Waiting a minute and a half in rain or heat or something is tremendous. My wife will not cross when she has to go to the post office at the intersection because cars zip along there. She walks farther down to get where she has time to see him coming at least. Folks with cars have, have more opportunities. One of the most, most important things is for us to make it safe for folks to get around. And so I'm in favor of both of them. I'm okay with it being above service F. I don't see that as a failure. I see that as. Where we've made our downtown a downtown and not a highway. Yeah, I would, I would think the biggest impact to local drivers is weekend. Because, because you're gonna, of all the days. The most pedestrians are out. On the weekends and the most local drivers are driving in Dexter on the weekend as opposed to the ones that are. So you're gonna, you're gonna, you'll, you'll notice this on the weekend. But. That's the intention of it. I, I agree, the one, the one at Dan Hoyer is a no brainer. Too bad, because I'm, there's not that many residents there. You know, if we did, if we did a count, you're gonna see people crossing there, but it's going to be very, very few over time. So there's a lot of times that it's actually activated. The impact is such a. I think in downtown, you'll see that on weekends. It's kind of like, doesn't bother me at all. Most time I'm walking.
I noticed that when the kids, kids come across, there's, our kids come from that shopping or from the. From that shopping center and they can barely, they don't ever make it, remember the light up there. Have to wait.
Well, that's how exciting that to us. I don't know, you, you might have not been at that meeting. That's how, someone, it was a student that emailed me about it.
Yeah.
So don't be having, you know.
So I, I do see Patrick is on now, if you want to ask him anything. I mean, I don't know that, if you have a question with Patrick, otherwise I think it sounds like we're fairly all aligned. Bring this back from multiple considerations at the next meeting, not fair to say.
Sure.
Are there questions for the engineer about the report for the announces on?
I have one quick question. So on page 135, is that just reference table three, condition about the level of service F? That's what, what's highlighted and read there? Is that current condition?
No, that, that's actually the proposed condition.
Where are the, where is?
The top part of that, chief.
Yeah, the existing is the top one and then below it, the LPI inter, alternative is the proposed condition.
Okay, so it's E, I mean, it's E and it goes to F. So it's not like we go from A to F, I guess. All I wanted to emphasize that. It's not, anyways.
The delay goes from seven to one second.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then the southbound goes from a D to a E.
Right, right. Okay, thanks.
Patrick, thank you for your team's work on this. We're bringing this back for consideration at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
I'm going to move down and house some comments and Aaron, I'll start with you. And then I'm going to go Alex. Anything sir online?
I have no comments. Thank you. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there tonight, but I, I enjoyed hearing it. I was a little concerned from what other people said that'd be difficult to hear. And although at times it was a little bit echoing, I could follow along. So I was very thankful for that.
Great. Thanks for the feedback on that. Uh, Jenny, one of the.
Yeah, I have nothing to say.
One update for those of you who don't know, I am a Michigan legislative economic development and land use legislative committee. Which is a fancy group. I sent the thing out when there's legislation pending. The thing that really impacts the city from that perspective, the short-term rentals. The one that's currently been passed out of the house that would allow short-term rentals everywhere there's a house without any real cap. Is stalled in the senate and the governor has indicated she would veto it. The, the group did give a favorable recommendation and concept for another one that creates. Something called qualified short-term rentals, which is if you're renting your house less than 30 days a year, you can do it wherever houses are. For the. Retirement fund, they didn't have a lot of information because it was very new and just like kind of dropped. Everyone's like, where did this come from? I did ask them about strings and their initial thoughts and impressions were that. For those communities that aren't as good a position as we are, we're probably doing all of the things that they would want us to do. So that sounds good. At the last, I'm, I'm playing right now text tag with Representative Dingle. She's going to be, when the, the maps are read on, she's going to be the representative for western Washtenaw County. The last forum meeting, she indicated that there are likely funds at the federal level to pay to offset. Costs for public safety buildings like fire station, police station. So. I'll keep you updated on how that text tag goes. And for those of you who have not been next to a really large bicycle race. You have to go to one of these things. It's an incredible thing to be standing next to the side of the road when that many bicycles go by that fast so close. There's a wind that'll pull, pull ahead. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I'm done today. Thank you. Well, spring officially starts next Sunday at 11:33 in the morning. Happy spring, yep.
Very good. I just want to call it a second. I forgot to, at the end of the last meeting of the council conference, I forgot to wish Donna a happy birthday on March 2nd. So, one of the problems. Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Your background and non-range participation. Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? Patrick, don't call anything. Hands up. Anybody in the audience wants? Okay, now we'll see the motions for adjournment.
Sound move.
530? Tom, all in favor?
Anybody?
Those opposed or opposed? We are adjourned at 8:31.